To the Republic, which is one nation.
You guys want to address the minutes first thing?
Yep, I.
I wasn't here, but I'm not addressing them.
I'll make a motion that we accept it as presented.
A second.
All those in favor, all those opposed, good. Well, we'll start off with the Hodgson Street Storm Sewer Project, which is basically just improving the drainage around Hodgson Street Pleasant Street. Remember it floods all the time.
Oh, it's a mess.
It is a mess. I guess all we need to do actually is just have me authorized to sign a letter of support unless somebody has some issue with us. Should we whip it over?
Oh, yes. Yeah. I got it. And then we had. Listen to you go by the phone, your boys.
Yeah, well, I'm actually real comfortable about this. Glad they're gonna do it.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign a letter submitting his, uh, the board's approval to move forward with the project.
One second. All those in favor, all those opposed, that was easy. Midcoast Energy. It's a big addition. This paperwork is bigger than your addition. All right. I have looked at this once. I know it's pretty. What do you got to put in there?
I'm just trying to put a six foot door.
Yeah.
On the end so we can get to from the tar.
Yep.
With a forklift. As opposed to having grass.
Is the reunion station end of the?
No, this is on the other, on the other end, yeah. So. We've created a tin shop there. So we're folding all our own duck work at this point. Well, not all our own, but most of our own.
I'd say that probably I'd put on the to-do list for the future. We ought to have some threshold for these little accessory buildings.
I don't think, obviously, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would have thought that this would have gone, you know, honestly, right through. It should have probably just gone through the code enforcement officer.
Yeah. His, his, his thing was it's commercial.
Yeah, I know.
So as soon as it's commercial, I guess he's gonna kick it over to you guys.
Yep.
So. In hindsight, I probably should because we consumed a rental property there, an apartment. Should then let's put the addition on the rental apartment before I moved the tin shop over there and.
Yeah.
But.
No, I hear you. I don't think this is going to be a big deal. All your fees have been paid. Everything looks good. You've seen that too, right?
Yeah.
Oh, site plan review, performance standards. Everybody gone through those. I mean, that's pretty basic. Noise fully enclosed. Think we ought to go, you guys want me to get down through those or you guys are all right?
I'm okay with that, but.
All right, I'll look that up myself. This application is complete, correct?
Yes.
It looks, looks complete. All right, I have a motion to.
Do we have to approve, see it's complete?
Yeah, that first.
Yeah, I make a motion that the application is complete as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor, all those opposed. Uh, I don't, I don't take any issue with this at all. And everything looks pretty straightforward. Anybody got any problem for this and questions?
No.
Anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Would you like to make a motion to approve this?
I move that we approve the project as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor. All those opposed. There you go, Bill. Now. Great Salt Bay School, five fifty-nine construction, nine hundred thirty square foot greenhouse installation. Clear from the yard. I needed your. Yep. What my phone doing that?
If we could just hold off just for a second, I see that Isabel, unless you are new town planner is joining us.
Oh.
Well, good.
Can you, uh? Hi Isabel.
Hi, everyone. Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to introduce ourselves here? You know me Isabel.
Sure, my name's Anne Jackson. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Jonathan Eaton.
My elder hun. Neil Gethner.
Nice to meet you all.
Jenny Bagan isn't here. We have two alternates that are out here. Why don't you tell the folks a little bit about your background as well?
Yeah, um, well, first I'd like to say I'm really excited to be starting. I'm finishing up my current position now, which is in South Portland. Um, and I'm not sure how much you guys have all been filled in, but I'll be starting on July fifth. I started my career in municipal government, you know, right after graduating from college. I have, I started in the city of Saco, working as the, my title was the planning and economic development associate. And I was doing a lot of both development review projects and bringing things forward to their planning board, but also doing some economic development work with business retention and recruitment. And also working on selling city-owned property for business development purposes. We had recently built a new public works facility when I was there. And we, I drafted the request for proposals for people to submit sort of the highest and best use that they thought that they could get out of the property. And was on the select team to select a new business to rehabilitate the old public works facility. And then I, like I mentioned, I'm currently a planner in South Portland. I've done a number of development review projects, but I've also worked on the update to our comprehensive plan. We're sort of just starting that process. And when I was in Saco, I sort of came in at the tail end of the comprehensive plan process. Or maybe midway through is the better way to say that. So I've been at the beginning of a comp plan process in one community and at the end of a comp plan process in another, in another community. And I understand that you guys will be looking for someone who can sort of shepherd the entire process through. So I'm ready to sort of do that. Other than that, yeah, in South Portland, I was doing policy projects and doing some zoning ordinance updates and general process improvements to our development review process, just to be more transparent to the public. And also to make it a little bit more streamlined for people who were anticipating building with our, within our community. On a personal note, we were, we were hoping to relocate to the midcoast area. I've been living in the greater Portland area for the last seven years. But I'm from sort of central Maine. I'm from Old Town. So this is a little bit closer to home, but still on the coast, which I really enjoy. I think, I think that's where I'll leave it. I'm really excited to join you all and really looking forward to meeting you in person.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for stopping in. This has been a, a real short meeting tonight so that we don't have anything controversial on the agenda. But you're welcome to stick around while we continue on. I will be introducing a, just slightly introducing a large project that the planning board will see, start seeing next month. So you may stick around for that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, we're down to Great Salt Bay School, construction of the year. And the greenhouse.
So, um, I don't, I guess the CEO picked, picked it up. I, I don't. The school neglected to get the permits, I guess, and so that's why we're here. Those structures are in place. I think you should do a site visit. The yurt is not, it's supported on posts. It's not drainage issue. The greenhouse is quite a big structure. As I said in my memo, it looks like it drains to a, a retention pond. It is just typographically below the greenhouse. But I think you should see that, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Mark, anything?
Um, I think, you know, I mean, I'm pretty much. Just wanted to make sure I had everything done so that's where we. We got one more year probably. Classroom, we have a modular unit coming that will fill up.
Oh, when is that coming? When is that coming?
Well, October, November.
Okay, there will be a planning board and a permit. I guess, you know what I think would be a good idea, Mark, is that, can you stake out the location of that? Do you know where it's going?
Yep.
You stake out the locations for the planning board.
We could look at the whole thing.
Right, at that time.
That's a very good idea.
A mock it on the pavement where it's gonna be.
Okay, so you, you'll have paved access to it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not any additional pavement.
It's going out, out front micro, out back of the school.
It's gonna go all back by the drop off that we're using off the boiler room. We'll have a new sidewalk to air handicap ramp, exits, the sprinkler will be in. Two classrooms.
If we don't do it now, then by the time it comes to us, it's gonna be too late.
Yeah, doing it right now is a good idea.
Correct.
Yeah, you probably ought to get permitted for it like right now. We'll go look at it. This is, that's not in this, right?
No, it's not. So you'll stake it out. They can take a look at that also. Uh, we need to schedule a site visit.
Yeah, uh, like I said, my, my next couple of weeks is gonna be a little dicey. So I do have tomorrow afternoon. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I could do.
I have, can you do that? Could you do tomorrow?
I'd be happy, I'd be later than four o'clock. I have an appointment at four. It'd be closer to.
How about next Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yep.
Actually Wednesday and Thursday.
Thursdays.
Either one of those I can.
That's it, I may.
Yeah.
Yes, no?
No. Unless it's later in the day.
No, I'm talking about doing it like four o'clock in the afternoon.
No, I can't. I'm starting a new job. I'm starting a new job and I'm gonna work till five. So.
Really, where are you going?
I was just back to the clothing shop, but.
Let's just say that we can.
You can do.
Five thirty, Anne, would that work?
Yeah, but I don't want to hold you up. You guys can do it.
What time is your meeting over tomorrow?
I could be there by five o'clock probably.
You want to just do it five o'clock tomorrow?
I could do that.
Well, do, do, we have to advertise that we're doing this?
Uh, I have to put it on the website.
That's it.
Oh.
I thought I had to go to the paper.
Forgot about.
No, it doesn't have to go on the paper, but it, uh, there's no way I can add it to the website because tomorrow is.
They say nobody's in tomorrow.
Right.
So we'll have to go for the following week.
We could do, do, like I said, we could do, I could come, I could come after five thirty. There's no reason I can't.
Okay, Wednesday, five thirty?
Five thirty be on either Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday's better for me, but you guys, Thursday is better for me.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday to sixteenth.
Thank you.
Five thirty, okay.
That's the fifteenth.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
That give you plenty of time, Mark, to get things marked out and where things are gonna go so we can see everything.
All knock out and get those safety work going.
Yeah, we'll get all three of those things. That'd be a good thing to do. You can have somebody go to work on the, back to the paperwork. That and.
So, uh, you know the dimensions of the building? I mean, what, what, what data do you have on the, on the building? You know? What information do you have on the, on the building?
Um, I've got it all at the school.
Okay, why don't you get that to me?
Okay.
Can you, can you take it to the town office and give it to one of the secretaries and they can, they can send me a PDF or whatever the information is so I can amend the application? We get that squared away.
Just make it part of this one?
Yeah, we, if, if, if you got to, let's, let's do it.
Yeah.
I mean, all we really care is the exterior of the building, right, location. And when you're out there, you're gonna check out drainage to, you know, just when we're out there, look at that.
They should alter the drainage for this new building though, because it's going on a tarred, presently tarred surface.
Uh, it's, it's, I don't know, it's on existing pavement?
Yep.
Oh, entirely.
Yeah, there's no foundation or anything. You're just pulling up there and putting skirting around it and make it a classroom, sitting around the existing rooftop.
It's like, it's really a non-issue.
Right.
It's like you said, it is. You know, viewed as a commercial development, so you really gotta look at it. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
Said that.
So if you get that as soon as you can to the one of the secretaries. Okay, great.
I'll do that Monday because Tuesday's.
You'll be busy Tuesday, right, town meeting? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
I just have one more question before we leave. Mark, some of the stuff that the fire chief had in his letter, some things look like we're done, some things will be addressed. How much of that stuff has been completed?
Ninety-five percent of it.
Can you just give us a cleaner document of what's been done and what's outstanding?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to add something to the agenda. So we talked, or I think I, I've mentioned to you about a large nursing home.
Yeah.
Actual nursing home off Piper Mill.
Right in the middle of my hunt.
So, uh, they are ready to, they're waiting for the town meeting vote because there's some things that proposed amendments that would make their project more viable. And so they're, they didn't, they're not presuming anything, so they haven't submitted any plan to me yet. If that town meeting vote is positive, then I think we'll have something on the agenda for July, at least a preliminary sketch plan. However, I, I wanted to review something with you today. Okay. Can, how do I share a screen on this now?
And choose the, choose the document.
Okay. Okay, great.
Select, is that the one? This is the PDF here, right?
Yeah, I got two of my, show, okay. Okay, let me move. Okay, this is a. Trying to get this thing to. So, do you remember? Two years ago, this is the Clipper Ship property, about a hundred acres. And you folks approved a revision to that plan. And basically, all this land out here. Eighty acres was transferred to the land trust. And the developer kept nineteen point nine acres for future development. Okay, so. Okay. This is that nineteen point nine acre section. Okay, the, uh. Hundred and five bed nursing home will roughly go in this area here.
A single building?
It's a single building. They've done four or five of these around the state. Okay, this is a very nice facility, but one of the things we've talked about a number of times is we do not want to waste what sewered, sewerable land we had in town. So I did not want to see this entire parcel devoted to this nursing home. What I wanted to do is make sure that whatever land is necessary physically for the nursing home, be devoted nursing home, but have the rest of this parcel potentially available in the future for compatible development. So it may be a senior subdivision or what have you. Uh, because of the way the previous developer carved up this, all the frontage for Piper Mill Road is in this area of parcel. And they cannot, if they just divide this into, there's no way that they can develop this parcel, this portion of the parcel. So what I've discussed with them is to create a land condominium. You know, you hear about building condominiums, home condominiums. This is a land condominium. Basically, that will, there'll be an association of these two lots. This lot here for future development will have, will get access from Piper Mill Road by easement over this, this parcel. And be able to develop this in the future, some, some type of compatible development. So what I wanted to mention tonight, just preliminarily, that when they come in, it'll be, they'll have a development site plan, what have you, but a part of it will be a land condominium. Okay, they'll be developing roughly this portion. This will be retained for a future compatible project that will have to be reviewed by you folks.
So the access to that is really no different than at forty-five, uh, four thirty-five Main Street with the rifle range out back. They have to go through.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the same thing, except for these will be, uh, I don't know who will actually own these. But I just wanted to run the concept by you because, you know, we've been real concerned about lack of developable land, you know, with sewered land. And we just didn't want to waste that. So they've agreed to kind of land bank that.
Who's Clipper Ship? Is that who owns it now or?
No, Clipper Ship used to own it. They sold it to another entity. The developer I've been working with is Sandy River Group. They've done a number of these around the, around the state. This is, Lincoln Health is somewhere involved because the existing nursing home over at Lincoln Health and the nursing home down in Booth Bay Harbor. Those beds, most of those beds will be transferred to this new facility. And as far as Lincoln, I don't know what Lincoln Health is gonna do with that floor area. They could do anything with it and they're pretty cramped now. They could do anything with it, and they're pretty cramped now, so I think they'll make good use of that.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about condominium, condominiumization of this? They say you're on a condominium, there will be each lot will be owned by one entity?
Could be separate entities.
The lot division is the red dotted line.
Is roughly, I I drew that in, but the, the, well, the, uh, they're not really lots. What they are is development areas.
Okay.
Okay, so they have, they, these two development areas will be sharing utilities, water, sewer access, and maybe some other things. But, so think of them as really development areas as opposed to physically separate lots. Though they may be defined by meets and bounds within the, within the condominium.
Purpose of the condominium, when they could actually just develop those lots.
No frontage. See, that, that's the problem. There's, because of the way the road is, this is all driven by the kind of odd creation of this lot to begin with. I mean, if you look at that, that, if, if they had just moved this line over and had a hundred feet of frontage.
Which they could have. They certainly could have.
They could have, but they didn't, and.
And it's too late now.
Too late now.
So would the people that are gonna do the nursing home own both pieces or just the one on the left?
Well, they will own both pieces now, but, but it may be another legal entity. Or could be the same, but it's likely gonna be another legal entity that would develop that other property. And we're not talking about a commercial development. It's something that would be compatible uh with, you know, for, the nursing homes, obviously, folks who need that level of care. That could be a uh congregant situation. It could be, uh, you know, some just senior housing. And I think I've told you before that across the street here uh, down here, we're, we got Ledgewood over here.
Yeah.
And I expect at some point, this area here will uh come in for some type of senior housing, just regular senior housing at some point.
Low, low income.
Uh, probably subsidized. Uh, it won't be, it won't be, from what I understand, it's not gonna be workforce housing, although it'd be great if it was. It's, it's gonna be some type of uh income. Uh, you know, some portion of the, of the units will likely be uh income eligible. You know, eighty percent or thirty percent of income, that kind of thing. We need that kind of housing too.
No, I've expected that for a long time.
Yeah, so we're trying to make the best use of what limited land we have. So I just wanted to explore that concept with you, so you.
I'm glad you did.
Yes.
I'd be interested to see how that gets developed.
Well, you'll be.
That's the first time I've ever heard of that being done in this area.
Well, Isabel, you know, one of the, one of the reasons, I think, uh, we were very happy with Isabel accepting the job, and she's, she's got a lot of site planning view experience. Coming from South, South Portland, so that'd be, that'd be good.
Well, this place is gonna be pretty easy on her then. Compared to that.
Yeah. Okay, that's it on that, and uh we need to schedule a July meeting because the first Monday in July, I think, is the fourth.
It is.
So.
Won't be seeing me. And I probably won't be back until, see what that is, because that's another gonna be a long weekend for me. We'll get awful hard to find you.
Well, that's the wonder, the wonders of Zoom.
You can't Zoom from where I'm going. I'm almost twenty miles from the nearest power.
Oh, good lord.
I have to drive five miles to get reception on my phone and I can text. I like it.
Are you back the eleventh?
The eleventh, uh.
I'm back, yes, definitely.
Okay.
In fact, I probably will be back by the sixth, but.
We will be having.
Do it the eleventh.
We'll be having a co-plan Zoom meeting at four thirty, so I guess that will look out okay.
On the eleventh?
Yeah, so that'd be four thirty to, it'll be four six, and then the planning board meeting starts.
It'll work for me. I mean, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Now, we have a.
All right.
Did you have some business? Just sitting in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hope you enjoyed it.
Oh, yes.
You want to identify yourself for our minutes?
Yep, my name's Corey Forden, the new co-officer.
I got some permits out.
To, uh, if you could attend the meeting, because I wanted to, that, that condominium also.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did, so we can put a face to the name now and know what's going on, so that's perfect. So have you been to the school, or will you be up there with us to see that, or how's that?
I've been, but I, if my schedule allows it, I'll go.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything too radical about it anyway.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Isabel, anything else?
Nothing else for me. I'm looking forward to meeting all of you in person.
So this is a little different than your Portland planning board, South Portland planning board meetings?
Oh, yeah, I had a planning board last night and I went to bed at about ten thirty, so um, this was, this was much quicker.
Okay, great, so.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll move in favor. Everybody else can stay.